Rise and say the pledge. Dr. Willett is going to pull up a video.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did Dana and Tony join us?
You maybe asked them to raise their hand. There's no one left in the waiting room as far as I can tell.
Dana and Tony, if you could raise your hands if you're here.
I'm here. I'm just having technical difficulties.
Okay, no problem. Just making sure you were on. And Tony's in Australia, so he may be coming a little bit late, but we'll see. Okay, the first business in order is the approval of the agenda. I'll ask now, are there any changes to the agenda? The agenda is approved. The next business in order is the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Dana, is your hand up for the minutes? Okay, all right. Okay, so there are no corrections to the minutes. They are approved as posted. The next business in order is the superintendent's statement. Walt, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm having a little, this thing is loading up a document, so just one sec. Okay, gotcha. Okay. So, thank you, and I appreciate that. Tonight, you know, we're coming together to do a lot of great work for the district and the community. Now, obviously, I wanted to make a quick statement this morning based on, or this afternoon, this evening, based on the events of the last week and events subsequent to our last finance and facilities meeting. You know, during the finance and facilities meeting on January 20th, a member of the committee attending virtually pointed out that other members of the committee attending in person were not wearing masks. The observation came with an expression of personal challenge that had been experienced in a desire to see the subcommittee lead by example. Subcommittee members accustomed to sitting at a distance, perceived as safe without a mask, were not aware of how that might be perceived by some in the digital audience. It's not my impression that these individuals wanted to make a point or take a stand regarding not wearing masks, but felt compelled by circumstance to provide an immediate response. A disadvantage of the digital meeting format is that on-the-spot reactions are often expected and even valued with a pressure towards the immediacy. These situations can be difficult for everyone involved due to the limited lens these Zoom-like meetings can sometimes provide, both tangibly in the visual range, what can actually be seen, and metaphorically in human intentions and interactions. As intentions can be observed by actions over time, ample opportunity exists through forthcoming meetings and activities to see what lies within our hearts. I believe that what lies within our hearts and the hearts of all involved is the best interest of children and the community. Insofar as America is the land of the rugged individual, Lin-Manuel Miranda wrote into the play Hamilton, "I am the one thing in life that I can control. Regardless of what I feel I do that is right, there is always something that I can do better. While I feel there is evidence I am a stickler for what protects children and each other and adhere and enforce the rules and use of PPE in educational contexts and with professional colleagues and subordinates, I could have done a better job of reflecting in my own actions and by assertively guiding officials in my office space to wear masks as an additional protective measure. While we are accustomed to wearing masks in our classrooms, offices, and the outside world, we may not habitually do so in contexts that feel more like those of a family or more relaxed contexts. And there are spaces in which masks are not required, such as one owns workspace and cubicle. It's a positive that we've come to feel like a socially-distanced working family, but the optics in a digital format may send an unintended message of apathy and noncompliance on this important safety measure, a message that I am certain every member of the board agrees is not a message we want to send. We are grateful for the feedback. Rather than a conversation around the details of spacing and context and conditions, this can be an opportunity to learn and move forward together, better equipped to lead, having had the experience. What does not destroy us most of the time makes us stronger. We have a lot of work before us, serving the community and the children of Talon, and it is my sincere hope that we do not get mired in conflict over the situation. I recommend we engage in virtual meetings until such time that the town has moved back to in-person meetings. In addition, the Policy Committee can review Executive Order 9H, 7NN, 9B, and CSD reopening guidance as posted in our plan and decide if an additional documentation is warranted, as guidance does frequently change and undergo updates. In closing, perhaps now more than ever, practices of compassionate communication recommended by author Karen Armstrong are crucial to our collective success. If we succumb to taking passion personally and reacting to or making decisions based on digital forums that benefit more from conflict than consensus, we spiral into a place that has little chance of success. I humbly ask for grace and partnership from our families and the board to move the district beyond this learned opportunity and continue with the important work of serving children and Talon overall. So I offer this respectfully to the board and to the community. I do feel like we have learned something from it, and we can move with that knowledge forward and do an even better job than, you know, what we've done. So with that, I am, I'm still trying to let certain participants in the room here and do a couple more things. My apologies. Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Give me one moment.
That would be because I'm muted. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I was really starting to freak out there. I was starting to freak out.
Sorry about that.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Yep.
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. I also have to, I'm noticing a couple of requests and things to manage here in the room, which is another aspect of like air traffic control, so just have to do a couple of quick things here.
Okay, I will wait.
Okay, I think we've got everybody. I think, Lisa, I think you're all set. And, okay. Okay, and I don't know. Good, okay, seems Ms. Griffin's back in. I think we're good. I don't know exactly, I don't know if everybody heard that. Do you think?
We did hear you.
You did, okay.
We did.
Yep, we heard you.
Okay.
And Tony, are you on? Yes.
Okay, so just, this is, you know, I'll share this general statement here so people who may not have necessarily popped right in when we were talking may have not heard it. So this is it in general. Let's try to.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. All right, so in points of information, Christine Griffin, your hand went up first. You have the floor.
Thank you, Christina, and thank you, Dr. Willett, for your statement. It's very much appreciated. There are some clarifications I would like to make regarding the 12021 FFC meeting. I was appropriately social-distanced when seated from the other committee members, including the superintendent, which was within the state guidelines and Executive Order 7NN. When my colleague commented on the lack of masks in the room, I held up my mask so she could see it, and then I proceeded to put it back on my face. It was in no means any sort of ill, you know, feelings toward it. I understand the community's concern that masks were not worn the entire meeting, especially given the recent increase in COVID cases. Therefore, I will promise to do better and be a better leader and will wear my mask at all times when and if we ever go back to future in-person meetings to protect our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Reenie, I see your hand up next.
Yes, I did prepare a little something to say. I wanted to thank Dr. Willett for his thoughts on this. And I just wanted to say that I do understand the concerns of the public regarding COVID, and I have read the emails regarding the FFC meeting. I did wear my mask into the building, and I had it on through the beginning of the meeting. I would like to clarify also that the reason I waved my mask in front of the camera at the meeting was to make it clear that I had one, not in defiance. I also put it on immediately after our remote committee member expressed concern and kept it on till the meeting was over and I was in my car. While I was in fact following the Connecticut Executive Order 7NN regarding mask and face coverings, which requires masks only when a six-foot distance cannot be maintained, I realize I can set an example and go above and beyond the legal requirements. I truly care about the health and safety of those around me and strive to be respectful. I will wear a mask at all times when representing our district regardless of distancing for the duration of the pandemic or as ordered by federal, state, or district policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Reenie. Jacob?
Thank you, Christina. So first, I just wanted to say that given the volume of emails we've received, I decided it would be best to address them all with this statement. Last week's FFC meeting, myself and two other board members attended in person. Once we were seated and were at least six feet apart, we removed our masks. Based on conversations I've had with the superintendent and the many briefings we've had regarding school reopening, it was my understanding that I was also in compliance that night. At one point, I did hold up my mask in a knee-jerk attempt to show that I do take the virus seriously. This is not well thought out and was mistaken as mocking mask-wearing or sending a political message. It was neither one of those things. Nevertheless, I do understand that the situation was not at all clear to those watching. And more importantly, I do not want our students to get the impression that mask-wearing is anything less than an essential tool to fighting the coronavirus. Thus, as co-chair of the curriculum committee, I will be making next month's meeting remote only, and I urge the Policy Committee to research a specific policy regarding this, as Dr. Willett mentioned. And I will be strictly adhering to that policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Anybody else? Okay. I did want to say a few things. Our superintendent is charged with ensuring the laws of the state and the policy of the district are enforced. So I do believe that the board could help with that as well in taking Jacob's suggestion in regards to taking a look at the executive orders in the Policy Committee and having that framework for everyone to follow. I'd like to thank all the board members for their comments. I would recommend that the Policy Committee prioritize adding the use of face coverings on their agenda as an action item. I believe a policy regarding PPE will quell any confusion and unify our team. I would ask that all board members please review the civility policy. And remember that everyone in this room is a volunteer and a human being. There are things that every one of us at this table can improve upon or reflect upon. So my final ask is that we not let this hijack the meeting and we move forward with the important work of the board. So next up is public participation. At this time, the members of the Talon Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. Please remember, this is a meeting in public and not a public meeting. Two minutes will be allotted, and Tony will time, and no boisterous conduct or profane language will be permitted. So with that, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hands. Lou Lubah, I see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for this meeting. First off, I would like to express my thanks to Dr. Willett for clarifying the incident that occurred as well as the other board members involved for their explanations. But this does give a concern where that the question that I have to put to Dr. Willett regarding this is pursuant to Executive Order 7B as well as Executive Order 9H, that these meetings are required to be recorded in some manner. And I think that the recording would have been able to also help clarify any issues. So through you, Madam Chair, I would just be inquiring as far as if these recordings are available, if there is any questions, so that it can be viewed by the public to inquire any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Karen Moran.
Yes, hi, just unmuting and one second. Karen Moran, 50, Merlot Way. Can you guys hear me okay? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Willett, for the very eloquent and graceful statement as our superintendent. I just have a few observations to share. The mask situation at the FFC meeting last week is really quite simple. There was no reason to have an in-person meeting in the first place. Second, when members decided they wanted to be in person, as far as I could see, they chose not to wear masks. As adults, I'd think they have the ability to read the room when the superintendent was wearing one himself. Third, when their colleague pointed out the concerns, they chose to react disrespectfully. And lastly, it seems to me that if they had chosen to put their masks on at this point, which certainly did not look like it or sound like it, and apologized in that moment, we would not be experiencing this chaos right now. This board would have been able to move on to do the work we expect them to do and be doing, continuing to do that work for our students. Period. That's what could have happened, but it didn't. I think a simple apology tonight would have been good and thoughtful and genuine.
30 seconds.
But it turned into excuses. I'm a little disappointed personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Linda Scheidel.
Hi, Linda Scheidel, 81, Morgan Lane. I agree with everything that Karen has said. But I'd also like to voice my concern about the executive session specific to the COO position appointment tonight. This position is needed not only for the district as a whole, but also for the well-being of our superintendent. There shouldn't be discussion on who is filling this position, but that this position is needed. I understand that promoting within is more cost-effective, and there should be no gaps created from the addition of this position. If there is someone internal that suits this position, then that person, that person's position should be filled, not eliminated. We are not in the position to be eliminating any positions. We have already eliminated too many within our district. I am afraid that if the majority of the Board of Ed does not approve of the individual Dr. Willett has in mind, they will vote to eliminate this position from the budget. So I do not feel that the individual should be shared. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Costa.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank Madhu, Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Philbin, Mrs. Sheik, and Mr. Holt for your responses. And thanks to Mrs. Griffin for your quick apology, for your lapse of judgment, and your commitment to wearing a mask in the future. I just have a few questions. I had attended so as to understand how this board would support our students and the Talon Public Schools. I just asked, why are you meeting in person in the first place? What could you possibly achieve and gain from meeting in person that you wouldn't be able to achieve meeting in Zoom? And I'd ask if that meeting was open to the public, as all other meetings had been open to the public prior to COVID. I wonder if so, would you have chosen to wear a mask? If the public cannot meet in person with you, I'm wondering if you realized how difficult it was to understand those wearing a mask during the Zoom. It was very difficult to understand Dr. Willett at times. Where's the equity in meeting in person when at least one team member is meeting from Zoom? And since it's difficult to understand the person that was wearing a mask, it may be advantageous to hold it on Zoom. Much has been made of the fact that someone videoed a person in the meeting, but I wonder why a public meeting is not being recorded during COVID in the first place. It is in fact a meeting open to the public where it is doubtful that the public may in fact attend. By not wearing masks, I wonder if you'd considered what message this was sending to our staff and students that are meant to uphold these mitigating efforts. Might I remind you that last week, in your own Board of Ed meeting, you discussed that we have but one superintendent with no backup if he were to get sick. I just might, I'd like to leave you with the guidance from CAPE. Great planning and having the mitigation strategies in place to minimize COVID-19 transmission in our schools has been incredibly effective. We owe it to our students to continue those strategies that allowed Connecticut to open the doors to our classrooms and keep transmission spread out of our buildings. We have never had a time in which our actions impact others more than this point in time. Together, let's rise to the challenge, stay committed, and play our part for our students and our educators. And remember, you're doing this for them, and they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Mary Rose Duberek.
Yes, good evening. Mary Rose Duberek, 37, Ryan Road. Some members of the Board of Education sincerely believe that if you are not within six feet of someone, you don't need a mask, and cited the Governor's Executive Order written six months ago as the basis for that belief. While the EO says you must wear a mask within six feet of someone in a public place, it doesn't tell you not to. There are hundreds of citations and guidance issued by the State Department of Education, state and local public officials, State Department of Economic and Community Development, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and doctors, nurses, and hospital administrators, all recommending wearing a mask and staying socially distant and washing hands and avoiding crowds, and that these mitigation strategies combined are effective in preventing the spread of COVID-19. Being in a conference room with others present for over an hour and not wearing a mask is risky behavior, even if you can maintain six feet. Doing so in such a public way sets a poor example for our students, staff, and teachers, and does nothing to promote the ongoing efforts to keep our schools safe and open. Then, mocking a fellow BOE member who shared her experience with COVID-19 and actually her genuine concern for your safety goes totally against the civility policy you all adopted last summer. That was the action that was extremely disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Kurt Schenner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully you can hear me well. I have a couple of quick questions. Do you need my address?
Yes.
138. Kurt Schenner, 138, John Allen. So I have a quick question. Was this meeting recorded? I've heard some people say it wasn't. I don't know. It's under my understanding that all public meetings like this do need to be recorded under the executive orders. And I believe if it is recorded, I think, I don't know, I would like to request to view it. Maybe that would help some people alleviate their condemnation over this issue. And if it's not recorded, I want to know, I would like to know why it was not recorded and who thought that would be a good idea for a public meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Jeff Schrader. Jeff, it looks like you're on the phone. You have to unmute your line. I believe it's *9.
Hello, okay.
Hi, Jeff.
Jeff Schrader, sorry, Jeff Schrader, 19, Melissa Way. It's, I have a question, or I have a question concerning the school calendar. The tentative 2122 calendar placed the last day of school as June 21st. Concern was voiced that this schedule did not provide enough days for snow days or other school closures. Since the pandemic showed that distance learning is a viable method of student instruction, why can't school closures such as snow days become distance learning days, thus maintaining June 21st as the last day of school?
Thank you, Jeff. Rebecca Rizley, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. Rebecca Rizley, 103, Mountain Spring Road. First, we'd like to thank the superintendent for his thoughtful and words of unity. It's much appreciated. Talon has 682 cumulative cases of COVID-19. Our schools have been impacted with 24 non-positive, and at least 355 students and staff required to quarantine at one time or another since September. We don't know how many of those quarantines went on to be positive diagnoses. Wearing a mask in a public setting, it's not a point of political debate, and neither is treating others with decency and respect. During an ongoing pandemic, no one entering someone's office or place of business should ask to remove their mask, and they should certainly not expect, they should certainly expect to be required to wear it for the duration of a meeting, especially in a setting with prominent signage requiring mask usage. I was in attendance on the meeting of the FFC committee, FFC committee. I sent an email with many of my thoughts, but really what it boils down to, and I'll reiterate that again tonight, it's still a missed opportunity. It's a missed opportunity for several board members for personal growth, for a true apology, and for working together. When a colleague discusses a lapse in judgment, the adult response, the one we've modeled for our children is not to become defensive and respond with sarcasm or anger or flippant reactions. Recognize the error, apologize if necessary or warranted. In this situation, correct the error and move on, do better going forward. If a child did this in school, they'd be corrected and there'd be a possible consequence. If an employee did it in a corporate setting, they'd be coached and a letter would likely be put in their file. However,
30 seconds.
Continued poor behavior and judgment, as well as lashing out at others, especially with no sign of remorse, which was what I saw tonight, no sign of remorse. I would say that Mr. Mari did not put his mask on even after asked to do so. And I, even though the other two were off-camera, my clear belief is that if they had put theirs on, Mr. Mari would have followed as well. The board is accountable, the residents, to the children that you're making decisions about, and the board needs to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Jayden Register.
Good evening. Jayden Register, 60, Stafford Road. A couple of people asked if there's a video, and considering how much the social discussion pages are used by some of y'all, it was recorded. It's over some of those discussion forums. There is a video. It's pretty disgusting. I personally hate to see it go out because, and this, it was part of my write-in to the board. I don't want this to go to the news. This, I mean, that's how sort of, that's how it came off to me personally. It was that sort of atrocious response that you would never hope to get from someone leading, especially in a small town like Talon. But it is simple. There's no reason to be in person, but there's also no reason to put each other in harm's way, but really put the superintendent in harm's way as well. Less than a week after discussions of what do we do without Dr. W, or Dr. Willett, what do we do without him? And then this happens. I'm not really sure where the thinking is. I'm confused. We just got done telling kids to wear masks for outdoor sports. Baseball out of all sports where you're separated, not doing much, yeah, they were wearing masks. So, so that's, I'll leave it there, but when you sit, no, I won't leave it there. When you sit, when you go sit in class, So so that's I'll leave it there. But when you sit, no, I won't leave it there. When you sit, when you go sit in class and you're six feet apart, you're wearing a mask. You're wearing a mask. You're not. You're not. You're not taking your mask off. You're wearing a mask. So I would say let's all just follow by the rules that are being set in place for the kids in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jayden. Kenneth Trice.
Kenneth Trice, 53, Doe Run, Tolland, Connecticut. First of all, Dr. Willet, thank you, but unfortunately, I regret that you had to fall on your sword. You shouldn't have had to do that. Second of all, I wrote this group back almost about a year ago, and I wrote about 12 points. And I realize that when I saw the trends, the actions that happened, I think it was last week, the first thing that came back to me is, I don't know how many of you read it. Number A, I had about 12 of them, but A was not a team. Some of you wrote back, but I don't know how many of you recall that. B, hostility or disdain for certain members. That was pretty obvious. C, criticism. But most importantly, P, you you guys forgot you're on stage. And and what I would say is, here's what should have happened tonight. Dr. Willet, people of Tolland, and everyone that is listening, I apologize for my behavior. I should have been better. I will be better. And I offer my sincere apology. In addition, I apologize to my teammate. I could have been better at that. I wasn't, and I am deeply sorry, and I plan to do better. And you folks can hold me accountable to be doing better. That's what should have been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth. Jennifer Galishan.
Jennifer Galishan, 150 Timber Trail. I think Mr. Trice just said it extremely well, but I'll follow with what I was going to say anyway. I wanted to start by addressing remote learning over the holiday break. I'd like to commend our teachers who did an outstanding job giving the students their best during this time. I recognize that every student and parent's situation is different. But in my experience, my son's fifth and eighth grade teachers were patient, engaging, and incredibly responsive to any questions my children had during this time. As for the discussion regarding masks at last week's meeting, I was extremely disappointed at the actions as well as the response when a peer brought it to your attention. Do you see yourselves as role models to our students? Do you see yourselves as leaders in this community? I would hope the answer is yes, considering you ran for and accepted this these positions. I'm also a volunteer, and when I have been on TPS property, not even interacting with students and mostly outside, I have worn a mask the entire time, as has everyone on the PTO. I almost lost my sibling a few weeks ago due to isolation from COVID. I was extremely concerned with social and emotional health before this, but now I'm even more. My son sat alone at lunch yesterday. Our children have sat alone this school year for multiple days in a row. Children at TIS have assigned seats and can only speak to the child who sits directly next to them on the same side of a table. A third child can't sit across from the table. So given that the actions in this meeting were following state statutes and okay for adults in a TPS building, I'd expect that we're going to be looking at the strict protocols we're holding our children to within their day, especially considering many of these impact their social and emotional health. And I would like to hear from every board member regarding how we are going to improve SCL in the schools going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Amber Como. I'm sorry if I pronounced your last name wrong.
Nope, that's it. Hi, Amber Como, 64 Morgan Lane. While I appreciate Dr. Willet's statement in regards to last week's FSC meeting, at this point, it is not the actions of wearing or not wearing a mask that needs to be debated. What it comes down to is the poor judgment and poor behavior of board members. In Ms. Griffin's statement, she mentioned that there was no ill meaning in her response when asked why she wasn't wearing a mask. But for myself and anyone else who saw the video of the incident, there certainly was a meaning. It was negative and it's not. This has zero to do with executive orders and policies. It has everything to do with common decency, which it feels that some members on this board have shown time and time again they are lacking. It is embarrassing as a member of this community, and it is concerning as a parent. I worry about this board's ability to make decisions for the future of our children, and I hope things can only get better from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak during public participation?
I would like to. This is Deirdre Goldsmith. I just don't have a hand. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Go ahead, Deirdre.
I would like to echo what my fellow residents have largely said and what I've largely been hearing within the community. Just serious disappointment in the judgment exhibited by the three board members. I also noted that this evening, none of the three board members extended a sincere apology to Dana Philbin, who was trying her very best to give them the wisdom that she had because of her experience with COVID. And that was, that's a tragedy that instead, I think everybody got to hear what what was happening instead. It was just more covering bases. I do hope that that's forthcoming and that she will be getting that apology. I also hope for better modeling. And I'm very, very grateful for Dr. Willet's modeling of appropriate behaviors to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, does anybody else wish to speak during public participation?
Ms. Ford, I noticed a lot of blue hands up. These people, these individuals were already covered. I just want to make sure before I start lowering hands.
Yes, everybody already went once.
Mr. Schroder Schrader got in there too, or?
Yes.
Yes. Got it. Got it. Thank you. Just I don't take anybody out here.
Sam Adlerstein, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just want to add, can you hear me? I think one of the things I heard was getting back to the important work of serving children. And I have a concern about that. My perception is that this board spends most of its time looking for cost reduction. And I'm not sure how that translates into serving children last year through the whole cycle of 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 budgeting. And where I attended pretty much every meeting, my perception is it's equally true this year. Now, last year was probably worse because there was a huge amount of pressure for a zero budget. I don't know if you have a similar target this year, but my perception is behaviors are the same. My perception is that you're around that table so that you could comb through the budget and fire questions at Dr. Willet and really try to extract as much as you could cost-wise from the budget. If that's not true, that's then, you know, I'd like to hear it. I'd like to hear how this board really does intend to serve children through the course of the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, last call for anyone else that would like to speak. Okay, the next business in order is correspondence. Tony, do you have the correspondence report?
I do. Madam Chair, can you hear me all right? My, we're having some internet difficulties on this side.
Yes, I can hear you.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. So we received an email stating that the writer would like to know what metrics will be used to determine returning to five-day in-school. An email stating that the writer asked to be if the BOE members that disobeyed the guidelines were to be held accountable. And we were served 30 received 32 emails stating that the writers stating the writers dismay that members attending the committee meeting without wearing a mask. Writers also expressed concerns with the responses when the issue was brought up. We received an email asking why the BOE members were not wearing the masks during the committee meeting. An email telling the BOE to keep up the good work. An email stating that the writer is not upset with the lack of masks during the committee meeting. The writer felt that the attendees were sufficiently socially distant. Email stating that the writer is asking what the policy is on kids working masks while in school. Three emails stating that the writers request that the board return to focusing on issues greater than members wearing masks. Another email thanking the board for their hard work. An email asking for the names of the three officials who chose not to wear masks. An email asking how to get a new diploma. And from the state representative summarizing the steps that the state is taking to keep the schools open. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Moving on to the next points of information, at this time, would any board member like to speak?
Do you want, Madam Chair, do you want me to to respond to a couple of things that I heard first, just like calendar, things like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so just a couple of quick things. And then, of course, you know, to defer to anything the board would like to to throw out there. But a gentleman asked about the calendar and snow days. We're in the process of determining that. Definitely, we would use some remote learning days in lieu of snow days if that's allowed by the state of Connecticut next year. It was and is allowed to the state of Connecticut this year, so we will, after the third one, be using remote asynchronous learning days. But we have to see whether that that provision, that allowance carries over to next year. If it does, we certainly would want to try to use that. A question was raised about meetings. The Board of Ed meetings are recorded on CVC and displayed in a community channel and and also recorded. Subcommittee meetings that have been mixed in-person and and virtual are more difficult. We've had some computer crashes. We are allowed, within the provision of the executive orders, to transcribe these meetings. And we do transcribe them in accordance. Let's see, I'm trying to remember everything, I think. And I guess what I would say is, you know, I do, again, just kind of reiterate that I think I think that, you know, in the correspondence that I've seen over the last few days from board members in the public and interacting with board members, I think the message is definitely received. You know, I think we, including myself, and not least of which myself, you know, we, there are definitely always ways to do things better. And I feel like we know that. My fear right now is, you know, that that we'll be taken off track on some of these really crucial things that we have to get done. And I want us, I want us focused on that. So, you know, there there is truth in something that that everyone says, and we need to be to be looking at that truth and then finding ways that, you know, we can collectively move forward. I just hope and thank people for for both giving us the feedback you have so that we can, you know, improve and move forward and then allowing us to do so. We do need to get, you know, the hard work done of making sure that these children are taken care of during this this pandemic. And I want to try to keep our eyes on the prize with respect to that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willet. Tony, I see your hand.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to touch a quick point on what Sam Adlerstein had said just a few minutes ago. You know, without commenting on the the perception or the visual of how it looks, I can absolutely attest from my own perspective and from others, you know, during these conversations that while while working on this budget, the fiscal aspects of it absolutely are something that we have to discuss and be worried about. I think we're making a priority to ensure that we've identified what those needs, you know, for our students truly are. You know, this this budget cycle we're going into right now is perhaps more important than any that I've paid in, you know, been a part of or or watched, you know, in recent years, not only because of where we need to be or where we're trying to align ourselves for the future, but ensuring that to get there, we're taking into account what the past year and a half and in the past years have really done to us. So like, you know, I just want to tell them and just make sure that everybody realizes the needs of our students, both now and going forward, is absolutely a primary concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Dana, I see your hand.
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, sorry, I'm having technical difficulties tonight, so I apologize. First and foremost, thank you, Dr. Willet, for some clarity that you shed at the beginning of this meeting. I definitely appreciate some of the guidance that you've provided. And I'm I'm happy to hear that you would like to start moving all of our meetings remote as it becomes an equitable issue. I, as not only as a hearing impaired person, but as the person that's on Zoom, my peers are not always on camera. You're wearing the mask or whoever. It's hard to hear some of what people are saying. I know we struggled with when we had that meeting at the public library, when several of us were on Zoom and the rest were in the library. I know that everybody was trying to do their best to project, but it was, I remember just saying over and over, can you repeat that or this and that? And there's also conversations that are had when you're in person or on Zoom that, you know, I couldn't hear, and I've asked my peers to repeat or what have you. So I just think that it's a great opportunity for us to just all be in alignment, either all in person or 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 all on Zoom. So thank you for that. But we are in unprecedented times and must ensure that we lead by example in the health and safety of ourselves, our students, and our staff. My request of my peers to wear a mask during an in-person meeting, which ability to social distancing was questionable at best, was ultimately to express my concern for everyone's safety in the room and that the Board of Ed was protected from any liability. By no means was was this politically driven or an attempt to distress any of the important work that we as a board are trying to do for our community. I was trying to communicate what I had experienced and to hopefully mitigate that from anybody else experiencing that. Regardless of the situation, the optics are that the Board of Ed abides by its own rules. With that, I've done some self-reflection. And last week, I think that we missed an opportunity to lead by example in role modeling proper behaviors. Poor judgment, lack of civility, and respect was not displayed. We need to shut our personal feelings for each other and most focus on our ethical and moral obligation to support our superintendent, advocate for our students and staff, and have the proper intentions to support a competitive and diverse education. I don't think that tonight's conversation, I think that tonight's conversation needed to be had. I definitely think that it's time we need to move forward and move on and really focus on what our job is as Board of Education members in our community. It's our job, whether Democrat, Republican, we are Tolland community members, and we have 17,000 Tolland community members and over 2,000 Tolland students, plus our staff. It's our job to join together as a team to ensure that we're doing everything that we possibly can to make them feel supported and to help them be supportive and be able to get the education that they so deserve. And thank you.
Thank you, Dana. At this time, would any other board members like to speak? Okay. I just want to say to the board members that tough times don't last and tough teams do. So I think we can pull through this. I think we all crave a sense of pre-pandemic normalcy. So the next business in order is that of the student representative reports, the reason why we're all here, the students. So with that, Alexandra Costa and Simmer Gruel, you guys have the floor.
Hi, everyone. So tomorrow, second semester starts. So we had today as like kind of a rest day, midsemester day. So we're super excited to start the second semester. And the second semester open house will be virtually, and it'll be on February 4th. And lastly, there will be a virtual eighth grade orientation tomorrow, and Alexandra, you can add on.
So the THS Jazz Band was able to put on a very successful virtual concert earlier this month that's still available for to watch it for those that are interested. The laptops are now widely available to most and all students, including the 11th and 12th graders. So that's some good news. And then lastly, Mr. Pollan has been taking the time to meet up with all of the seniors individually to discuss plans for end of the year activities. I think that's just been a really good way for each of the seniors to feel like we're having our voices heard for what our end of the year will look like. I think that's it.
Thank you, ladies. And the next point and the next business in order is the superintendent's report. So Dr. Willet, now the floor is yours.
Right. Okay. So the typical, this time of year, as you know, we normally will go over the monthly financial report. This was put pushed back a bit because the superintendent's proposed budget was was the previous meeting. So we 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 normally would do it in the first meeting of the month, and it's being done right now in the second. The general, generally, I will go over and I will tonight, the basic overview of the lines and give you a sense of, you know, the over-unders and how things are going. You'll notice the letter that I am highlighting on Zoom right now is also included in the. You'll notice the letter that I am highlighting on Zoom right now is also included in the packet. The available balance is about 1.2, 1.3 million at this point, or 3.22% of the budget. This includes things like salaries currently under budget because of, you know, the COVID situation. We've had some fluctuations in hiring and so on. You know, we, we are working to continue to shore up those things. Additional hiring of the teachers and paras continue. The balance is about 319 and it will fluctuate. We do have some things we have to do now to cover bases that I believe between now and the end of the year will expend a lot of that. Substitute available balance also, there just aren't as many substitutes who want to work during this pandemic. We are working on managing that situation. And so, you know, it's dropped about 44,000 since last month. And I think it will start to catch up as we move along and find people that are willing to to work during during the pandemic. Overtime expenses can't be encumbered. They're under by about 91,000. It's down from last month by about 20,000. But overtime will be something that that continues to be incurred as we deal with certain things that pop up that we need to handle that aren't part of the typical year. Stipends are currently over budget. We've talked about before the influence of pay to play on that. We normally collect a lot of pay to play funds. We've reduced the collection from 200 to $100 per person. That has an impact on it also. Not all budgeted stipends have been encumbered or collected. So that fund is going to run over as we collect funds and backfill that that item. But we can expect that one to run over this year because of, you know, of not charging as much, the modified seasons, things like that. Health insurance severance, employee benefits, you know, currently there are 161 under, but that's for where we are in the year. Newly hired employees and retired employees drive some of the Social Security and Medicare numbers. New hired employees and those who retired since the beginning of the year can immediately change balances. The available balance is 123,000. The line will remain under budget until the hiring is completed. So you'll see that fluctuate as well. Let's see, retirement, course reimbursement, unemployment expenses are collectively under budget. There is an increase in unemployment due to the impact of COVID. One, and there's also people now looking into degrees because they have really nothing to do at home. So that's a great time to go out there and start, you know, getting more degree coverage. And we have people letting us know they're headed in that direction. Benefits and consultants and workers' comp are on target. Legal audit and tech are collectively under budget through December. The number's down by about 7,000. The district's finished negotiations with the paras. The secretary of union is starting. So we'll see, you know, more incurred against that line. All repairs, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment expenses, technical, they're going to continue to be spent as the year goes on, as you might expect. Many of the maintenance and custodial expenses are cyclical. They're not going to be fully incurred until the end of the year. There's been an increase due to supplies, materials and building needs. And there's also been some price gouging. So COVID-19 has kind of changed some of that. And we do expect to be expending that or more. Student transportation is fluctuating from month to month. As you know, this month, it's a bit over. The majority is due to an additional out of district transportation that we need to incur and in some transportation for some of our in-school programs that we need to incur. And those are usually driven by my piece and things that we need to just, you know, that are compliance related. Special ed tuitions are, you know, plus about 14K as we reach the halfway point in the year. You know, this, this will fluctuate as we go along as well. And energy expenses, as you know, were transferred at the beginning of the year. Textbooks are not fully encumbered. We do have a supervisor who's who's been out for a bit for for a good reason. But there are some things that need to be processed. So it's under budget by 25. We do expect that to be, to be expended fairly soon in the next two or three months. Instructional supplies and general supplies are collectively under about by about 142. Spending will continue throughout the year. So we do expect that to go down. Instructional equipment line was over. Again, that's because we are going to be backfilling that with educational reserve funds as as has been previously reported. So that remains over that those funds have not fully arrived into our books yet. So that should balance out. So that's just a basic overview of where we are right now. This is the monthly budget report that you're familiar with. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer everything I can and or record, record them and get back to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. At this time, do any board members have questions on the monthly financial report? Jacob?
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Just one quick one. I think you might have gone through it at FFC, but I forget it. What are we up to with COVID and related expenses at this point?
We are, I think. I did, I did have that number and now I'm just blanking on it. But we are, we are at the 200,000 zone now in COVID-related expenses. We were at 180 fairly recently and I think we've pushed over to 200,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Anybody else? Okay, I guess we can go on to budget discussion.
Okay. So again, you know, just opening the floor. In the last few weeks and actually in the last week even, the Board of Ed has submitted a number of questions and asked a number of questions in my office. I've been responding to those questions as they've arisen. So this is an opportunity, you know, for the board to touch base and continue the conversation that they began last week and we've begun collectively over the last few weeks as you head towards the adoption of the Board of Ed budget on February 10th. So this is just a continuation of that. I've been devoting the vast majority of my energy to responding to board questions, as you might imagine. So, you know, as we get into the next week or so, I can transition to some of the general public questions. There are some overlaps and there are many more board questions than there are general public questions. So I think I was able to get to the point of answering all the board questions that are currently posed. And that was the objective before tonight's meeting was to try to get that, get it to that point, which I believe I have. So. So that's where we are. And, you know, I yield the floor for the board to continue its deliberations and conversations with respect to the fiscal year 22 budget and the formation of the Board of Ed's adopted budget ultimately, February 10.
Okay, Madhu, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Willett, can you explain how having a COO or a curriculum coordinator or a assistant superintendent would help streamline the efficiencies of the board? And do you have a preference for which one of those positions you would like the Board of Ed to adopt in their budget?
Great question, complicated question. I think that the the most efficient way to approach the the issue right now is the chief operating officer concept that that I, you know, put out there, I think it was last week. And I've been doing work on that. And I'll be talking more and more about that over the next week or so. And of course, communicating with board members on that regularly as the questions are posed. Essentially, the objective with the COO is to, within the realm of the budget that we have fiscal year 22. And in having looked at a couple of things, I think we can effectively fund the COO and administrative support for the COO by by making adjustments in line 730. And and that job will allow for less things that I would have to directly be involved with on a day-to-day basis, which would open up my, my time to devote more to to helping out and working on the teaching and learning side of things. So right now in this district, it's, it's kind of, you know, everything that happens from an operation standpoint and ultimately a teaching and learning standpoint ends up, you know, at my desk or on my lap. The COO would allow for there to be a person between myself and everything that happens from an operations side. They would handle all the individual contract employees. They would do evaluations for that group of people. And it would allow me to focus my energies entirely on the teaching and learning side of things while working through the COO for the day-to-day things that come up from an operations standpoint that take a tremendous amount of time. So I could be focused on working with the curriculum supervisors on some aspect of PD and some, you know, some emergency state report that has to be filed and some, some supplemental report for a grant has to be filed. And, you know, individual contract employee issues arise or there's, you know, there's evaluation, evaluations that need to be handled on that side. Having a COO that manages those aspects of things would take those things off of my direct plate. And, you know, I would deal with things that rose to the highest level of operations, but they would be handling the things that don't. Right now, just about everything ends up on my desk at the end of the day. So it makes managing all of it a little bit harder than it would be if if we had the COO as a, you know, as someone in on the team. So I think that's a good way of solving the problem. I have expressed in the past my concerns, you know, about during this particular span of time in particular, you know, the expenditure it might take for an assistant superintendent. Those jobs can be the 150,000 to 170,000 curriculum director. I, I think we are managing very well. I think we can, you know, by refocus on teaching and learning that the COO can provide, you know, for me, in my time, would would help with some of the things that, you know, we've been challenged by from a teaching and learning standpoint, without having to expend, say, 150,000 on a, on a director of curriculum at this time. So I think it's a good way of solving the problem. And I think we have, you know, we have some internal capacity for that. So that's, that's what I would suggest right now. I think it's, it's in the best interest of the district to go with the COO option.
Okay, I did have a couple of other questions about the proposed staff that we, we are going to be, that's going to be in the proposed budget. The full-time speech pathologist, they're going to be serving the entire community, correct?
Yes, right now, yeah, yeah, yes. And we've, we've had some, you know, some issues come up with COVID in larger populations. So we're currently covering some of those with consultants and people that we've hired. And we're just looking to make sure we have the capacity next year to manage it.
Okay, if we did not fund this position, could you elaborate on what the detrimental impacts are to the Talon Public School system? And if we didn't fund this in our budget, how could it negatively affect the, impact our schools? And what are the legal ramifications versus, you know, liabilities that we would open ourselves up to if we did not fund that particular position?
Yeah, we, you know, this is a, it's a, none of the positions that are up this year, you know, none of them are really something we can do without. The SLP position right now is in response to, you know, the needs of the district. And those needs for these students are direct student needs that we are currently covering. You know, we're handling the increased capacity, the increased demand, the increased necessity in individual, you know, student plans by bringing in, you know, consultants that 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 serve as SLPs. We cannot do it without a staff member to to manage it. I did include data for the board that showed that, you know, that acquisition of learning is at about a 63 to 68% of what it would have been in a typical year. And so, you know, that, that is not just Talon. That's, that's in the entire United States. There, there's hard data that students, you know, normally have a summer slide, but the summer slide has been exacerbated by the pandemic. And the data demonstrates that, you know, we can expect the summer slide to, to, again, this summer also, also be more than would typically be the case. And this is attributable to the pandemic and what families are going through and all kinds of various aspects of what the pandemic, you know, provides as obstacles. You know, even in a full in-person learning, many people can opt for remote learning. And many students that, you know, understandably, families need to make decisions in in the best interest of their children and family. And everyone's circumstances are different. Hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of kids are remote, even if we are in person. So those individual students also, as we move through the year, you know, we're going to need to be, be very, very mindful of of their progress and be able to manage anything that is a challenge to them because those challenges will ultimately become referrals for special education if they aren't managed effectively. So, so both special education resources need to be increased for those with IEPs. But in, you know, any of these positions that help ameliorate the need, you know, to do that are crucial. And the SLP is absolutely crucial. If if we don't, we're going to have to consult out for it, which will cost as much or more. And then if for some reason we were unable to do that, we would, we would be out of compliance with what we need to manage for for children. So it's really not a choice as much as it's an absolute need for next year.
Right, so I'll cut to the chase. Like, that's, that's basically the question I'm going to ask for the rest of the potential staffing hires. So if you could go into basically, you know, the the legal ramifications, the liabilities that we would open ourselves up to if we did not fund the ABA teacher at the high school, the behavior intervention specialist in TMS and the social worker for the district at large, um, could you go into that, please?
Sure. And I'm trying to pull up some of the things that I've provided, if I can get them to display. I'm having an awful time with the computer today, so I'm sorry about that. Seems to be the gods of the machine are not in my favor, but, but I will, I'm just going to try to to open them up as I'm talking. The ABA position is an extension of the ABA program that we have, you know, as part of the lighthouse programming, part of a many-year objective in the district to, to provide excellent services for students and fully live up to our obligation to children of all backgrounds and of all challenges. The ABA program, ABA position extends the program into the high school. The children that are in the program have been moving up from year to year through the the school system. And, you know, at this point, have arrived at that level. If we don't fund that position, we will be basically cutting the, you know, the legs out under the program. It's, it's not something that that I would recommend. It would, it would be a big problem. We'd have to figure out some way of managing staff-wise, something that we really need to cover in this way. And we, we knew that this was coming. And the program itself does what is morally and ethically correct with respect to serving students. But it also is a, is a cost avoidance program for the district. Six, six students in an ABA situation could be $1.6 million by them, by themselves. So a program handling them is more morally and ethically necessary within a district because it's important that the students are with their peers and in their community and have the equal opportunity within a school. But also is part of that overall lighthouse project where, you know, these things are things that if you're doing the moral and ethical correct thing, there's also a cost avoidance element that goes with that. So that's a very important piece of it as well. The .5 ELL position, we, we went from a handful of English language learners to about 20 to 26 English language learners in a very short span of time. We need that, that is like a, as far as the state of Connecticut is concerned, that's a, that's akin to an IEP. It's, it's a service that you need to make sure you're asking and probing families to make sure that you're not missing any that might need it. And when you do identify those families, there's, there's no options involved here. It's the moral, ethical, correct thing to do, but it's also, it's also required by the state that that is done. So in order for us to fulfill our obligations morally and ethically to these children that, you know, that are part of the ELL program, you know, we need to have this position available. We are currently, we, you know, we are currently a bit. We are currently a bit challenged by what has, what has increased in numbers. We're doing a great job, but in order to to live up to, you know, what we need to be doing, you know, we need to make sure that we, we have that position as well. The BIS position, behavior intervention support. Again, that's, that's a position that, you know, from the SCL side of things, there are two aspects to RTIS or BI. Also required by the state of Connecticut is response to intervention and scientifically, or scientific research-based interventions. Those are required by the state of Connecticut. So that students that are in the general educated population don't automatically get identified for special education. And those programs were required because of throughout the state of Connecticut and over identification in, in special education. So they're, they're not optional. They're things we have to have. And so they are considered both academic and behavioral. The behavior intervention support position is necessary for managing the, you know, the, the need in the programs that we have. And comparatively, if we aren't able to do that, we will end up with more designations in special education and we will end up with more outplacements. So again, from a moral ethical standpoint, it's the right thing to do. But we also, without doing so, open ourselves up to the potential for not being able to fulfill the, the needs and, and ending up with claims and requests and petitions and mitigations for outplacement. An average outplacement is about 69,000, not including transportation. So, you know, from a cost avoidance point of view, it's, it's the right choice and it's a position that we need. Has been requested and is needed and that's why it's in there. Social worker, you know, again, we're looking to, to do what's right. BGP and TIS basically are in a sharing situation right now. We know that we need the resources at both of those schools in that position, but help shore up the resources in both of those schools so that we can fulfill the needs of the families and the children from a social emotional learning standpoint and from a family support standpoint. That has only been exacerbated by the pandemic. It's been made very, very clear to us. It's also very clear in the literature. There are many articles about the situation, not only in, in our country. But, you know, we also have local information and data that suggests that this is, this is needed. You know, we, we see it every day. I meet with the, the school psychologists, counselors and social workers once a month now. Those meetings are, they constantly open my eyes to how much is, is, you know, they are dealing with. And, and it's been made, made very, very clear to me that those additional supports in that pre-K five level are needed. And I believe not doing so will again, you know, be morally and ethically not correct, but also, you know, will result in people, you know, looking for outside service if they cannot get those, those things taken care of within district. So it's, it's an important piece to appropriately serve our families and children. But again, without such service, services, without such supports, things tend to cascade downward and people will eventually be looking for support through, you know, requested designations, requested, you know, PPTs, things like that and requests for service. So, you know, if we aren't able to fulfill it in the general education population or able to fulfill it within the structures that we have, we are still obligated to respond. And, you know, so we've, we've made a lot of progress throughout the last few, you know, a couple of years. Both expanding and doing what's right morally and ethically with children, whether you're talking about the TTA or the LEAP program or the ABA program or the programs like that. And as most good things do, you know, they are also going to have the, the residual effect of, of allowing the district to avoid certain challenges and misfortunes that would require us to serve children elsewhere if we weren't doing it correctly here. So I think that said, I think I covered.
Yep. So just to, just to re, and I want to make sure I'm understanding. These are, these positions aren't wants or even needs. These are, we have to have these. Is that correct? Is that your assessment?
From an operational standpoint, you know, I, I sometimes shy away from absolutes, but I would say, yeah, absolutely. This year, these are absolute. I, we haven't put anything forward this year that isn't an absolute need based on the pandemic and what we're dealing with.
Okay. And I had one last question. The COO position, are we promoting and then backfilling the position that we're promoting from?
Well, I have, I have a, I have an idea that I'm working through and, you know, we'll continue to talk to the board about that I think, you know, we would be, we would have some internal options for this. Again, you know, we would also be, be providing a support position to balance out some of the other things that would need to get covered. So, you know, it would be a promotion from within situation and then a support staff person to manage some of the other aspects and a redistribution of work.
Okay. That was all I had.
Sure.
Thank you, Madhu. Sophia, I see your hand.
Yes, thanks. So Dr. Willett, you have described the positions added as absolute, an absolute need or those being of extreme necessity. And I ask you, what does our district need that is perhaps not an absolute or extreme need? And I give the example of a firefighter. For a firefighter to put out a fire, I would say water is an extreme absolute necessity. But a hose or a bucket or a vessel to carry the water would be a need. So if you could tell the board some of the needs that our district needs, that would be really wonderful.
Um.
And perhaps that's a broad question. You might want to answer that on, on the Google form.
Yeah, and it is. And I, and I want to put, I want to give that answer due diligence, you know, and think about it and, and give, you know, give you a, a good answer. I think right now, you know, off the top of my head, I, I have, um, you know, I, I put a lot of energy, as does the team of educators working on this, into, you know, into what we know is needed for children in Talon. And, you know, we've always worked from the standpoint also that, you know, there, that we would do that within, within balance, always seeking to find how we could do things better and not always going back to the community for more and more and more. And I think we've done that. I mean, we have a five-year average of budgets that are below 1%. Five years below, you know, five years average of below 1% and, and three years directly below 1%. We've done that, you know? And, and we are, you know, in a position now where, you know, we, what I would, what I would envision for the future that would require investment of, of, you know, a modest level would be in, in further enhancing our pathways, you know, moving into the third phase of the lighthouse programming would be putting resources behind the pathways that the curriculum committee is going to be talking about more. You know, we've done, we've done the, the job of, you know, of, of morally and ethically correct programming. And, and that morally and ethically correct programming has, has resulted in cost avoidance opportunities that were all part of lighthouse. We have done a great job of expanding, you know, and, and programs like Open Choice do a great, great synergy in, in our town. And that also is part of that overall objective, the TTA, the LEAP program. These were all part of the late lighthouse programming. And the, the, the final stage or the third stage of it was the development of the pathways. And I would say that that is where my dream, my, my hope for talent exists now is moving into the development of that because I know Talon can do as good of a job as the, you know, the arts magnet. I know that Talon can and does do as good of a job as any aerospace or engineering magnet. I know that our teachers are as good or better. I know that our programs are as good or better. So, you know, having a, a pathways where a student coming, you know, up through middle and into high school has all of these options means that when those advertisements are in rave movie theaters, when people can eventually go back into rave movie theaters and they see those advertisements that those, you know, those schools have the advantage of putting in places like that, they will turn and look at Talon's offerings and say, well, why would I go there? I have a great, there's a great engineering pathway in Talon. And when I graduate, I will have that sash, you know, that of honor that I had completed this engineering pathway or I had completed the business pathway or I completed, you know, these types of things. And it will be very clear. One of those major objectives was making sure that, you know, we avoided the attrition. And we have reduced attrition to some of these other schools. But I think that would help us continue to diminish that attrition. You know, and provide students, you know, real perspective that they know that what they're getting in Talon is as good or better than they could get anywhere else. And that's what's happening now in the new age of education is it's, it's more competitive than ever. When we were in high school, our high schools were where we went. We didn't have to worry, they didn't have to worry about losing children to other high schools. Now we do. We've been put into an environment that is competitive. We need to make sure that it's very clear what we offer and those pathways are what can do that. So what I would be envisioning, and it's a great question, Sheik, is I would be looking forward now and thinking about how we can enhance that. How we can make investments in engineering and robotics and make investments in the medical sciences, make investments in business and make investments in those things, not, not radical and irresponsible investment. But, you know, managed and logical investments that will mean a bump up here and there in budget lines, but will have a return that is, is dramatic. And, and we have a, we have a track record of that. We are seeing much more, you know, much more of students being interested and sticking around than heading out. We have brought those numbers down a bit.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Sophia, any more questions?
No, I let someone else have a turn. Thank you.
Jacob, I see your hand.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say that, you know, with any budget, there's a lot of questions that we have. But I was really happy with this budget process that a lot of the add-ins were already things that we had talked about for the most part. So that's a big thank you to you, Dr. Willett, and the work we've done up in committees. The, to familiarize ourselves with a lot of the, the things that our district is facing so that we're all up on the same page. As far as how I feel about this budget right now, again, I'm still interested in the COO position. And the other thing that I'm, I'd like to see is how we can utilize the ERF. We've talked a bit about this before. Specifically, I was just looking up at the question matrix that we had. And for one of Ms. Griffin's questions, I believe it was about the instructional equipment new. You mentioned possibly reducing that ask by 55,000. And I wanted to know if that was just a, if you made that reduction, would that be a transfer of those funds to ER, to ERF expenditures or would that be something else?
So what I was looking to do over the last week, you know, was obviously answer board questions, but also look about, look at ways that we could fund the COO position within the budget request that was already made. And so that 55 that I discussed coming out of C, 730, which is largely what you're talking about. And 730, remember, has a, it has a number of funds in it. So that kind of is a conglomerate, you know, conglomeration. But the 55 that I was thinking of would help, would help take care of, would partially take care of the COO and the support staff needed for the COO. And that, that would exist within the budget request that we had already made, but would allow us to have both the positions that were asked for in the COO position and support position. So that 55 wasn't something that would come out of the budget. Those items would, but that 55 would just be reutilized in personnel. So it wouldn't really reduce the budget. Now, if you wanted to reduce the budget, you, the board could take the 55 that I have identified and you could reduce the budget with the 55 instead of putting it towards the COO. That's another option. But I do and have identified 55 that, that I would like to use differently.
Okay. All right. Yeah. My question, I think you kind of hit it towards the end there is just, is that money, you're, if we did that to try to keep it at a level 3.59% increase, you would basically not be purchasing those items and would be using that towards personnel. Okay. Yeah. Again, I, I'm still interested to see if maybe we can put some of those expenses towards the ERF, if there's anything that can qualify towards that. Cause I do agree that this is a difficult year in that we really do need to make sure that our programs are fully funded. Also, I did have a question for our chair about perhaps having a special board of education meeting. Cause I believe this is the last regular meeting before we plan on voting on this budget. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I was, after you guys had gone through your questions, I was going to ask however everyone was feeling about having a Board of Ed workshop specifically on the budget. So we all felt comfortable, hopefully voting yes on February 10th.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
I can answer one little more of what, what Mr. Maury's asking. Yes, you could actually, if the board desired, make some of those expenditures out of ERF. That would just be, you know, taking them out of the budget. But yes, you definitely could.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Tony, I see your hand.
Yeah. And I just want to, just chime in footstomp on what Sophia was saying there, you know? Like we've talked about in some of our meetings, Dr. Willett, I'm incredibly interested in making sure that, you know, Talon is positioning itself for the, for the pathways. And I'm excited about those opportunities for the students going forward. And, you know, as we're working on this budget and we're entirely focused on recovering from where we are, it's obvious that in a lot of these areas, you've, you've positioned ourselves to go forward. And so I'm just trying to look at that a little bit more and make sure that, you know, if the stars align and we can make some significant advances in these areas like pathways and stuff, that we've at least fiscally positioned ourselves to do that, you know, where it's responsible as well. But so I've placed a couple of questions on the, on the board, the, the website for you that you can answer, you know, it's, you get time in there. But I'm looking at specifically, and it's a slightly different vein, but the facility maintenance and repair. I know you've talked a lot this year, you know, with the, the challenges that your team has had to do specifically where it comes to the facilities, you know, with COVID, with the air conditioning and the, the cleaning and all the, the different aspects. But I noticed that we're looking at a relatively small increase from this year to what you're budgeting there. Does that take into account? Will that prepare us for when the students come back to still be able to maintain that level of expectations?
Yes, I, you know, we, we should. I'm looking at what's, forgive me for the acronyms, but the, the S R two funds. And, and we don't have a, a full list of what we're going to be able to do with that. But I think with what we've requested for facilities, so long as we don't do a lot of reducing of it, we should be able to pivot and cover the bases that we need to cover next year. Even, even with the increased cleaning and types of things that we would need to do. You know, a lot of the stuff that's in there too is, is regular maintenance, scheduled maintenance. I, I would not want to cut anything in there because we lived through a period like that and it was a dark, it was not a good period of time. I think I've already spoken about it. So, yes, I think we can. I think we have some supports in S R funds, S R two specifically. And that, you know, between that and the CRF fund that we have at the town, I think we'll be okay.
And just for clarification, I'm, I'm in no way suggesting cutting that. Simply just making sure that it's the right number that when the kids start coming back, we're, we're positioned.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Tony. Dana?
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Christina. And thank you, Dr. Willett. A couple of questions that I had, and I don't know, and Sophia, correct me if I'm wrong, if this is kind of where you're going. But the way your question was kind of maybe think about some, some other thoughts and ideas. And in this budget, you have provided some needs in COVID recovery, year-over-year impacts, increased competitiveness for educational needs. So you talked about the COO and some different positions throughout the district needed on all levels from Birch Grove to the high school. But I guess, and again, I don't know if this is a broad question too, is there are some things that we have lost in years past, i.e. the art teacher, i.e. the fifth grade teacher. I know that there are a lot of people were talking. I know that there are a lot of people were talking about a counselor or social worker of some capacity at the Birch Grove level. And not that I want to have another meeting, but I like that Mr. Murray suggested having a special meeting. Because I think almost having a list of of, we already have these are must have, right, that you've presented us with, and I and I really appreciate it. But I think we need to have like a list B of if we can put it in, these are things that we've lost through the years. Or these are things that can help us continue moving forward. You know, to support our educational goals, to make sure that not only are we responsible by our students and staff by providing a diverse curriculum across all levels with with teachers and the proper staff. But we also can continue to remain competitive, like you said. I mean, it is concerning that we have folks at the high school level that are going out of town to get an education where we can fund these fiscally responsibly. However, yet, you know, make sure that we're, we need to fund our students, basically is what I'm going at. And I don't, and I guess in my long-winded Dana way, I apologize, I'll get right to it. Is I kind of would like a list B of things that we can kind of put back in that we've lost in years past that our predecessors have fought for, that unfortunately, with whatever may have happened, that we had to eliminate or make a tough decision, I should say. Yes, I would like a list B is kind of going with that, if you heard me. And again, I'm not advocating totally for another meeting because I know we have a lot. But I think that if in fact we have an opportunity to try to to really support our budget and support our students and staff, then I'm all for it with with that secondary list.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? All right. So I do want to pull the board. Are are you guys feeling comfortable with the budget? Do you guys want to have a workshop next week? Maybe we can direct Dr. Willet to ask Jen Palumbo to pull us for a date next week. We can all come back. I know Jacob asked more questions than I ever asked when I was a newbie on the board. So I have a lot of reading to do. Thank you, Jacob. Sophia, I see your hand.
So yes, I would like to come back definitely. And I'd like to see the cost expenditure for Dr. Willet to add some of those needs that he described.
Okay. So show of hands, I guess I'm just going to count hands. It looks like majority rules. Dr. Willet will ask Jen to set up a date. So thank you for that. If there's no more questions, you guys can lower your hands and we will move on to the COVID update under the superintendent's report.
Okay, sorry, just making the making the note there. Okay. So, thank you. And, you know, we we as a district are, I'm continued to be proud of our staff, our teachers, our other staff, parents, custodians, nurses. You know, secretaries, administrators, everybody. They're working very, very, very hard to keep to keep everything going, to keep everyone supported, to keep student learning occurring. You know, we have had some serious challenges. You know, we, you know, we as a district, we as a state, you know, have gone through some turbulence here. You know, vaccinations and vaccines right now are a big, big part of the effort. We have managed to get all of our nurses vaccinated. We are in the process and have positioned ourselves within BAM so that when the time comes, education sector, essential employees will be able to get vaccinated. So we're poised and everyone has done everything that they need to do to put our district in the best possible position for when the time comes that those open, that our staff can get it. And we've we've been and have had long conversations with all the stakeholders, work very closely with Eastern Highland Health District. And, you know, we are aware of and promoting and sharing information to staff and to the community so that we're we're poised to be able to take advantage of both the testing centers, the various different testings that occur. And again, the vaccines, when the time comes, there will be openings and there'll be sessions at E O Smith, Mansfield Community Center. Those types of places which are close by. And we're we're making it possible for our staff to to be in a position where, you know, that they can get them quickly when that time comes. And considering, you know, our education option, as as you all know, we're sticking with the four day in person right now, which the state considers all in person. That remote cleaning day or that Wednesday has been seen as vital, especially with potential new variants. And I've been listening to stakeholders. I don't make any decisions in a vacuum on this. And in our last meeting, there was a lot of compelling information shared that indicated that, you know, being in that four day in person with the Wednesday was a very important place to stay right now. Considerations relate to I E P, P P T support. You know, those things don't turn on a dime. And so, you know, I'm going to need to be able to make sure that children are, you know, that are challenged in certain ways are in a position where our services are everything that they need to be. So, you know, that was a portion of that logistics related to teacher effectiveness and transitioning. Capacity for supporting remote learners was something I needed to consider very carefully, which our remote learner population is is larger in some in some subgroups, and we need to keep an eye on that. And vaccine availability, as well as the impact of COVID like illness. Right now, we have to treat illnesses that have the characteristics of COVID like COVID. So that does have a personnel impact. It does have an impact on our operations. And everyone that I know is working very, very hard, most of us late into the night to make sure that the tracing efforts are done and that things are handled appropriately. And this particular time of year has a lot of challenges from a viral spread point of view anyway. But but it's exacerbated by the pandemic in ways that we've never had any experience with before. You know, we are, we're working very, very hard and we're following all of the directives, all of the rules, and we're doing it to, you know, carefully and to a T. So in that process, you know, and in considering all the stakeholders, sticking with the four day in person with the, you know, the Wednesday asynchronous cleaning day was important and necessary. However, having said that, provided that there are no other major impacts on us, I am looking towards what we call the education, you know, the pandemic education period six or the sixth pandemic education period in March. My goal is to return us to five day in person learning in March. I believe that a lot of factors will be mitigated by then. We will have had time to take care of some of the things that, you know, we're in process of taking care of. Vaccines will be in a certain place at that point. As it looks like mid February to end of February, it'll open up for the for the education sector. So at this point, you know, I've been asking staff to start making preparations in that direction. So while we're four day in person now, my goal is to to have us transition to to five day, probably with a half day on Wednesday by that by that next pandemic education period. Again, you know, this all has to be taken with an understanding that I don't have a crystal ball and I am not going to know exactly what the conditions are next month. But but that is where I would like to see the district go. Provided the, you know, these things fall into place and that we're able to to position ourselves you know, with those I P, you know, I E Ps and things like that, with special populations, with logistics, you know, with the vaccinations and with the mitigation of COVID like illnesses edging off at that time. So that's that's basically just a quick update on that. I'll answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you for that update. I was at the COVID meeting with Dr. Willet and his staff, and they are working hard. You know, with my advocacy for the five days in person, they gave me the reasons why, you know, we weren't there yet. And they are very understandable. And I think we're moving in that direction. So I really appreciate that, Dr. Willet. Dana, I see your hand.
Thank you. And yeah, I just want to mimic what Christina just said. I find those meetings to be very thorough and educational and selfishly enjoy some quality time with our with our senior leaders, our educators in town. So I do appreciate their time and and their candor at those meetings. I want to clarify, Dr. Willet, you said that all of the nurses have received their vaccine or they're on the list to get the vaccine? Is that what you said?
Yeah, my understanding is all the nurses have received the vaccine.
That's, that's
At first, the first, at least, at least the first round. Yep.
Excellent. That's, that's amazing. And I appreciate you driving that. That's fantastic news. Some of the things that I just wanted to be cognizant of and just conversations that I've had and some feedback and emails that I've received is, you know, one is, you know, there's a lot of folks that want that five day. So I'm, so I'm glad to see that it's on the radar. Definitely had, I even received an email just to this morning, if I recall, in regards to that. But again, I want to make sure that we're cognizant, and I know you are, and I know this is on your radar, but the mental health of our educators, you know, they're they're teaching every which way. And I know that the Wednesdays was a time for them to whether it be, you know, do curriculum, you know, or set agendas for their next week, or talk to their peers about best practices or what have you. Again, I don't know what Wednesdays look like. I'm sure you have a good idea and structure around it. But I want to ensure that our educators that are doing something that's beyond heroic and such trying times, an opportunity to get that breather or support for each other during those times. Also, on Wednesdays, there's a lot of times when our remote learners who are not in school, who don't have that educator one on one time. Several several of the teachers are spending one on one Google meets or what have you, whether it's one to one with their remote student or if it's the group of two to six remote students that don't actually have that in class time. I think that's paramount for our remote folks, because if our folks are not going to four day, they're sure not going five day. So it's super important that we that we ensure the equity of our of our remote students. And again, if we go back to five days, that's just asking more of our educators to figure out how they're going to have that one on one time with our remote students. And just listening to Mr. Saba's conversations about how many square feet that they actually scrub is is mind blowing. So I would just want to make sure, and I'm sure Pete has a has a plan. And I'm sure now that we have, you know, time to prepare, that they are still continuing to do and get the opportunity to ensure that that the buildings are cleaned in a way that that we need them cleaned, just specifically due to this pandemic. So they're just some of the things, some of the things that I kind of highlighted on that on the return to school plan. And I'm glad you're forward thinking because ultimately, at some point, we're going back to school five days a week in some sort of normal capacity, hope for sooner rather than later. But those are just some concerns. Again, thank you for what you did, what we've done for the nurses. I look forward to hearing that our educators are next in line. And I do appreciate what everybody's doing because this this time is is nobody, nobody wrote a book on how to on how to handle this role as an educator in times like this. So I'm just very appreciative of all of our child and public school staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Jacob?
Thank you, Dr. Willet, for the update. And that's great to hear about possibly getting back to five days in person in March. Assuming it's safe, that would be excellent. I was curious, though, as far as making that happen up in March, is there anything that we at the district will need to do in preparation for that besides, you know, things that are kind of kind of sort of out of our control, you know, which would be, you know, the case counts and how far the vaccine distribution plan is is along? Is there anything that we need to do to make that happen?
Yeah, I'm going to have to reallocate some resources to remote learners. That population, as we transition, getting prepared that not, you know, certainly families, some families will make a decision that they are not interested in that option. So we do have to do some expansion of the capacity and we know this. And so we're in the process of doing that now. I have managed some of that, but but there's more that needs to be done as we look forward into the next next month or forty five days. We do balance that with with the dynamics the pandemic has given us with respect to personnel. So there's only so many individuals to go around or want to work in an environment, you know, like, you know, like a pandemic environment. So so that's that was, that is one of the things we're working out in the next forty five days, thirty to forty five day period there to get us, you know, positioned for that. You know, again, special programs, we need to make a, you know, plan and a transition for populations that are special program populations. That doesn't turn on a dime, at least not responsibly so. So, you know, by by making sure that we're looking forward and making plans, you know, we can responsibly respond to the needs and the changing needs. Some of it comes up at us on a short term basis because people can change their mind about their ad option. So we do have fluctuations with special populations that we need to be able to have the capacity to handle. So that is something we're also working on getting in place in the next thirty to forty five day period so that we can make sure that, you know, we're not dropping the ball for anybody as we make that make that move. And clearly, you know, teacher support so they can do the job of continuing to support the children. I think that, you know, I think it would be fair to say that people know that we are working hard for them. You know, regardless of who that them is, if the them is kids, you know, there's a lot of evidence of us working hard for kids. Administrators working hard for teachers. Myself, I will do anything for teachers. I think that they, the teachers and the parents, anything for teachers, anything for parents, anything for any of these staff. I think they know, we'll bend over backwards to to do everything I can. So as we transition to that particular, you know, moving forward, that five day option, you know, I can't have a blind eye towards the needs of our staff so that they can serve the needs of our children. And I do have an intimate understanding of of their struggles. I know that they they have faced a lot during this pandemic. They're heroes. They really are. On a day to day basis, most people don't know what what they're doing. So, you know, those half days are going to be crucial. That time after the student dismissal that the teacher would have, that can't be given up. There's no question in my mind that that cannot be given up. So it may be that we would be half day in person, but that remainder of that time needs to be for the teachers to be able to to manage the very different classroom environment they have when they're splitting it between remote and in person and all the other pandemic dynamics. That's not gone away. That's not easier to manage now than it had been. They're better at it. But it's not less, you know, less of a heavy burden. So, you know, that has to be kept in mind too. You know, I have to do do everything I can to make sure teachers are, you know, teachers and staff are supported. And remember, just keeping in mind, you know, I don't know, I don't have to remind anybody of this. All of us are going through a lot right now. The last few weeks have been very hard. The the bubble that we expected is happening. I'm talking to people daily that are going through an awful lot. And they're trying to go through all of it while maintaining everything else they're doing, which is something we are all familiar with. So, you know, by taking care of every single individual in this district as best as we possibly can, we we keep everybody going. So it is a real collective effort. And as we transition in this direction, I guess the last thing I would say about it here is we desperately need cooperation, desperately, desperately need cooperation. If you don't have to travel, please don't travel. If you don't have to, you know, do certain things, you know, please don't. And we're in the last, you know, we're kind of running this marathon and we can finally see the end of the marathon possibly coming over the horizon. If we want to keep everybody in school, we've got to do the things that are hard to do. Which means that, you know, there are things that we can't, you know, in our family and things we can't do. And if we are able to do that, then then I can see us, you know, maintaining and moving in the direction that we all want. But this is the worst time to be to be making, you know, to to be getting fatigued. It's the worst time to be getting fatigued. So I just, I just encourage everybody as hard as it is to keep, you know, keep having those hard conversations. In my own family, I've been doing that. It's not been easy. In my own family, I've been doing that. It's not been easy. Insisting that, you know, we do testing and making sure that we're doing everything we need to do is not easy. But, but if we can do it, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to maintain and move in the right direction. So basically, that's it.
No, absolutely. And I'll just say, real quick, that when we first started this school year, I did not know what exactly to expect. I don't think anyone really knew what to expect. It is, it still amazes me that we've been able to stay mostly hybrid or in-person throughout this school year, and that's a real testament to that dedication of the staff in our district, and all the parents and students as well.
Thank you, Jacob. Madhu?
Thank you. I just wanted to address Ms. Galichant's question at the beginning about seating arrangements at lunch. Is it possible to relax those, or at the very least, make sure a child isn't sitting alone at lunch? Because that actually breaks my heart a little bit to hear that.
I think, and I will look into it. I know that the administrators do everything they can to try to set up the situation, so that, you know, there's, the children aren't emotionally isolated. And I think we, you know, we will always continue to examine, examine anything that we're provided and look for options. I would say that as the superintendent, you know, just in general, and I gotta, I have to talk to Ms. Galichant, and I'm, I'm open to talking to any parent guardian, anybody. My text number's out there. Call me, you know, I'm happy to hear and talk to you and set up meetings. We want to try to provide the best we can. But I, you know, with, with respect to some, some of how we're doing it, if it keeps us open, we're going to keep doing what we have to do to be open, so that the kids can be interacting in school. And some of that might be, you know, keeping in place some of the things that, you know, that we have right now, the releases in the middle and the high school, things like that. You know, not, not getting kids packed into cafeterias during this particular time. Those are all really important mitigations. And I just, I asked about that again the other day, and I was, received an answer that, you know, we really need to be mindful in those cafeteria environments of, of keeping the children, you know, separated, and, and to the greatest extent possible, middle and high school populations not, not in that situation. Just as they're telling us, you know, to restrict certain things in restaurants and so on, you know, we have to be very careful what we do in schools to make sure we maintain and are able to stay open. And the new variant is not making that easier. It's, it's actually, you know, we're being reiterated in DPH meetings to, to, I hate the term "double down," but double down on efforts to get PPE, and, you know, make sure everybody's following all the rules, and that we're not loosening up on those things right now. So I don't think I'm really doing a good job of answering Ms. Galichant's question. I'm gonna have to do that more in person, so I can deeply understand the, the challenge. But I know the principles are, you know, they're, they're, one of their primary interests is making sure that kids have a good social, emotional support experience, and have that chance to be together. So I, I know we're gonna keep striving to make that experience the best we possibly can under the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madhu. If no one else has any questions, we'll move on to committee and liaison reports. So looking, Dana, Birch Grove Committee met on the 19th, right?
I think that was the date. We have, again, we have the, the mock room walkthrough. I know that we're all kind of filling out our, our times if we can go, because Town Council, Board of Ed, as well as Building Committee are going to be invited to those walkthroughs. It's not only going to allow us access to the locker room, but we're, there's going to be, the progression has been fantastic. So we're gonna have an opportunity to walk through a lot of the finished spaces throughout the building. So that's pretty exciting. I'm not going to bore anybody else with any other updates, because we do have it on our agenda to go over all the furniture and fixtures. So there is a lot that, that the Building Committee has gone through and approved for change orders and our, and our furniture and fixture expenses and such. And we'll be going through that in K2, and I believe Ms. Murray's here online. If I'm not mistaken, I'll search for, to answer any questions at that point. But thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Dana. Let's see. Negotiations, you can't really update us, but did they meet? No. The contract is done, right?
Yes. And we're setting up to meet with the secretaries in February.
Perfect. Curriculum has not met, but I took a look at the February 4th agenda, and it looks great. I might be joining that one. So thank you, Madhu and Jacob. Sophia and I moved the communications meeting to February 2nd. So I hope you guys can join us if you'd like. And Sophia, if you have a town council update for us from last night?
I do. I attended a lively town council meeting last night. Two proclamations are up for approval, one on declaring racism a health emergency, and another one addressing the recent events that took place in Washington DC. The proclamations were stricken, as they were denied, decided to not be an appropriate avenue to address these issues. The town council did agree that they are important issues, and perhaps may issue statements regarding those issues. Also relevant, town council approved the Program Income Plan, which establishes guidelines for utilization of program income. Program income comes from a grant that benefits moderate and low, low-income individuals in obtaining housing. And that's it. I mean, there was more to it, of course, but those are the hot topics.
Thank you, Sophia. Christine, do you have an update from FFC?
Yes. We met last Wednesday, and we went over the monthly financial report that Dr. Willett presented tonight. Yeah, because we were, our agendas were a little off for the regular meeting, so we kind of saw it before the board, which normally we would talk about it after the full board. We did go through, I learned a lot of acronyms with S R 1, S R 2, and, and all those. So we talked a lot about our possible federal and state funding that we may still, fingers crossed, you know, be eligible for. We obviously talked a lot about the COO position as well, and we kind of went through some of the, some budget questions that the members of the committee had. We kind of talked about some of them at the meeting as well. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Policy was, I don't know if we moved it, but I think we canceled it.
Yeah, my apologies for the late notice to the committee members. I, again, I discussed it apparently with my Outbox and didn't actually send the email. But yeah, just due to events here, I felt it was better to move it from this week to next. And based on what we've discussed earlier, the agenda may shift a bit. So I'm pleased that we do. But Jen will be reaching out to try to find us a time in the next week to redo that.
That's great. And thanks for prioritizing that, Tony. All right. So with that, Chairperson's report, I think I've said enough tonight, so I'm gonna skip that. And we're gonna move on to board action. K1 is the school calendar.
Okay, so school calendar is what we've seen. You, you had a chance to take a look at this. It's now the second read. Just a couple of highlights again. Start time, start date accommodates the Birch Grove project. We want to keep all the schools in the same timeline. It's very important to do that. Parent-teacher conferences for grades K through 12, that does part of it, and nighttime conferences for the high school, which didn't used to happen in the past, and now are becoming a regular part of it, which was requested and was, you know, over the last few years, people really wanted that. Now we have them. Half-day December, I'm sorry, it's a full day off in November 24th to provide travel time. This has also been highly desirable for families. And a half-day on the 23rd, also responsive to families' needs. It adheres to the East Con calendar, which is the practice that we are supposed to be following as a school district, fulfills the contractual obligations, which do, you know, dictate, you know, some things like RPD, and when they fall, and how many can happen prior to school starting versus during the year, et cetera. I have a reasonable number of early release days and full professional in-service days. They're needed. We don't have as many as we've had in the, you know, past few years, but these are enough. We can work with that. And, you know, there's an appropriate number here. And they're also in a position in the week that retains student popular, you know, populations better. Not having them on Fridays is important. That modification was made a few years ago, too. So it's part of the Board of Ed packet. You can see it on the screen here, but you can also see it in the packet overall. It's got the same general structure as our previous calendar. You can follow it. And on the second page, it's got the dismissal times and information about the schools, as well as the holidays and cultural observances that are part of the calendar as well. So this is presented to the Board of Education for its second read and action at this time, if possible. And that motion, should you choose to accept it, would be to accept the Town and Public School 2021-2022 calendar. With second discussion vote.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Christine and Dana, do you have your hands up for questions before we move to action?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Christine. Oh, okay. Sorry, Dr. Willett, when you said, if we choose to accept this mission, I just had a, you know, Mission Impossible thought there. But just, I know, Dr. Willett, you and I had been talking about the January in-service day versus the midsemester day. I'm just wondering if you might consider putting another asterisk on here, just for parents who are not familiar with midsemester day, that the K through 8 day is a set-in-stone day, but midsemester day is possibly subject to change. Because I think people might assume, especially if you've not been in the high school before, that all, if they have, you know, multiple children in different grades, that they all might have the same day off from school, but that is subject to change for the high school. So that would be my only suggestion, just an asterisk somewhere on here. Thank you.
Sure.
Dana?
Sorry. Hi, thank you. And I know that, I forget, I think it was Jeff who had mentioned the snow days versus remote days, or inclement weather days versus remote days. And I know that you briefly, is, I mean, is that something that, that can be adjusted, so that the calendar doesn't go so far in to the 21st? Is that an area of opportunity, since we do have the one-to-one initiative, and our teachers are, and our students are becoming so, you know, well-adjusted to remote learning? Is it possible?
Yeah, you know, I think the, the issue will be if the state of Connecticut continues its allowance this year into next year. So, you know, if it does, then we can use some remote learning days and Louis Snow days, like we planned to do this year, if we go past three. But we don't really know for certain. So I, you know, we, we definitely will commit to doing that if that's an option, but we don't know, know that it is an allowance yet. So.
So we could do it as a caveat to it, and ultimately, those adjustments if need be.
Yeah, I mean, you can hold me to the record. I would try to do that next year if we were allowed to do so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, Dr. Willett, we have three snow days built into this calendar already?
Um, yeah, I mean, well, it, yeah, it'll fluctuate a little. You, for instance, you could also, as a board, decide to take away April break if things are really bad, you know, as you've done in the past. So it depends on what actions the board takes ultimately, or takes certain days away. That's been considered in the past. I mean, all kinds of things can be done differently if we have a really strange year. But, you know, right now, the thing that would mitigate those days most is if we were allowed to use some snow days as remote learning days. That would make the biggest difference if, you know, without affecting everything else.
But just for the sake of knowing right now, we have, there's three built in, and that's why the date ends on June 21st? Because I feel like we had three built into this year's calendar, so we're three built in to next year's?
I think there are. We have 180. Well, we also have a couple of other options, too. I mean, we have 182 days that we go, or required only to go 180. So there's a couple of things we could do. Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't just thinking about, in terms of, you know, the equity of education and remote learning. And no, you know, some people can bob and weave in remote learning, others can't. So I would probably advocate to keep those three snow days in. And that's why I'm, I'm kind of asking about this for the vote tonight. So with that, I will entertain the motion.
Senator Duce and Tyler, make a motion that we accept the school calendar for 21-22.
Jacob Marri, second.
Is there any discussion? Christina, see your hand. Is that an old hand?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. You may abstain. Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion carries. On to the next agenda item is the Birch Grove change orders.
So I know that we have the benefit of having Katie Murray here, the Chair of the Birch Grove Committee. There is a lot of words to this document, and probably people have heard enough of me reciting things, or, you know, talking directly to you this, this, this particular meeting. So I'll defer to Ms. Murray, but just as a general overview, you know, this, this is due to the January 19th meeting. You know, they approve Phase 4 furniture fixtures and equipment. And I, I attend these meetings. I usually will lurk in the background. You know, they are, they do vet these, and they put it through a lot. No, I don't think there's any stone that goes unturned by that committee. They're, they're very thorough. So essentially, this is listed, like you've seen in other documents. You can, you can see in the board document and the supporting materials, there's also a proposed action, board action, that's needed right now. So because Ms. Murray's here, I'll, I'll just kind of defer to Ms. Murray for any questions or any additional comments about this.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Does anyone have any questions for Katie? Jacob?
Okay. Got a couple here. So the first thing was just, just standpoint. I wanted to know if there was a separate FFNE budget. Yeah, that's allocated among that $46 million, and how much that is. You know, I, for the most part, I, well, actually completely, I trust that our people are looking through this and are making the right decisions. But I do want to kind of understand a little bit about the, the financial end. So.
Absolutely. So the, the line item for Phase 4 and Phase 5 are combined. Phase 4 is what we're, what's in front of you right now, which is furniture, fixture, and equipment. Phase 5 is technology. And the line item for those two phases is $1.527 million. Just to note, this was a deferred item due to the unsuitable soil costs, and we are in the process of reinstating it. The total estimated costs for FFNE and technology, it looks like will come approximately, is estimated to be approximately $55,000 over the $1.527 million line item. Again, these are estimates. So we are in the position now of looking at the complete package for furniture, fixture, and equipment. As you can see in Dr. Willett's summary, there are essential items, which is the majority of the items before you, as well as some, what they've termed wishlist items. And these are items that would benefit the school, usually the, the overall population of the school, in other words, impacting a lot of students. So those items are also in this packet. The intention is that with your approval tonight, the architect will take the FFNE packet to the state of Connecticut on Friday. We're hoping within two weeks to get approval from the state. And then furniture, fixture, and equipment goes out to bid. The majority, if not every single thing in the FFNE package, is on the state bid list. So that saves us some time, which is great. And also, you know, we don't have to go through the bid process again, because the state has already And also, you know, we don't have to go through the bid process again because the state has already done so. However, there's a little bit of room for movement, even within the the state bid list. Items change, you know, all the time in terms of, you know, is this chair really the the same exact chair? Or do we need it in a different color? That might impact the price slightly. So what the building committee agreed to do last week was to approve the FFNE package with the knowledge that combined with technology, we are approximately $55,000 over budget. And we, as the the building committee, will make a final decision as to which items get purchased after all the bids come back. So we are not, as a building committee, we have not committed to spend any of this money yet. And we believe that with the estimated estimated cost, we expect that the overall total is going to be slightly different than what they've estimated. So that is one consideration for us, being quote unquote over budget in terms of we're predicting that this probably will come in a little over budget. The other thing that the building committee discussed is the contingency funds available in this project. So there are contingency funds on both the town side of the budget and on the construction side. Right now, the town side construction, the town side contingency is a little bit over $150,000. And when the unsuitable soil money gets reinstated, there is an additional 75 plus thousand dollars to come into town contingency as well. So even if the estimated cost for furniture, fixture and equipment and technology does come in exactly as estimated, being $55,000 over budget, there are funds in the project budget, all within the $46 million, to buy everything on both phases.
Thank you. Very thorough, I appreciate it.
There's a lot to it, I guess. I didn't want to just.
No, no, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
No, I appreciate it a lot because, you know, we get a huge document like that. It's great to see that we have a committee that's doing their homework and really making sure that everything is running smoothly. I guess just one other quick thing, and then I'll let other people ask questions, is what kind of items were on the list wishlist? I know there wasn't a ton of them. I didn't want to see.
Sure. I think that's a great question. So the the wishlist items for furniture, fixture and equipment are primarily, there are a couple of area rugs that are on the wishlist. Area rugs are not something that's traditionally purchased for every room. So there are a couple of reasons for that. First of all, all the regular classrooms are partially rug and then they're partial tile, essentially floor. So there is rug already down on the floor in every single classroom. And also, in talking to Mr. Staba, the facilities director, we know that a lot of these elementary school teachers really like having area rugs. They use them for circle time and for other academic time period. However, there were a number of rugs apparently purchased recently within the last two or three years that Mr. Staba has evaluated and feels are appropriate to bring into the school. So there are not a lot of area rugs that are in the wishlist. The area rugs that do remain on the wishlist are those that are going to be used in classrooms that the entire school population will utilize, like the the library. I think there's a small area rug going into the art room. And there there might be another room or two that has area rugs. Another wishlist item that every regular classroom has asked for is an additional file cabinet. Mr. Swanson explained to us at our last building committee meeting about the need to have lockable filing cabinets in all the classrooms due to paperwork requirements. And so the teachers have all asked for a lockable filing cabinet. Those are wishlist items. We also have some items for the sensory room that are on the wishlist. These are items that would be used by the entire school population, is not a specialty population for the sensory room that are on the wishlist. And I think that's, I think that's all of them. I think it's just rugs, sensory room and filing cabinets.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Katie, can I jump in really quick?
Yes, please.
I definitely think maybe if we could send just some of those things of the from the sensor room in particular. I know that some of the the committee members had mentioned grants or different things like that for the sensory room. And there were some things that the state doesn't deem reimbursable simply because of the 20 year lifespan. That is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so some of these things for the sensory rooms are quite interesting. And I was educated by Fawn and her team with it. So it might be behoove us to, I mean, I can send a shortened version to the BOE on some of those wishlist items if everybody would like that.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're in the packet. It's the packet's just huge.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I can cut and paste. Send the bridge version.
Thank you, Dana.
Just as a note, I am trying to show people in the public the document, but every time I move it, it it's it almost overwhelms the connection that we have. And I think it's messing up because it's so big. So I would just encourage you to look at it at home because I think Katie started to, I couldn't hear her voice when I moved the document. So I'm going to not touch it again.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Is there any other questions for Katie? And Katie, thank you for being on and that very thorough answer to Jacob's question. It's definitely helpful with the conversation. All right, so I will entertain this long motion. Who wants to step up?
Jacob.
Oh, go ahead, Jacob.
Oh, thank you. Jacob Mari, I move to approve the final Birch Grove Primary School Phase Four Furniture, Fixure and Equipment Plans and Project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated January 15th, 2021, including the professional cost estimate of $871,345, which is within the $46 million total project cost for the State Office of School Construction Grants and Review, project number 142-0083N. This motion authorizes the Chair of the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools to sign state forms, SCG-042. I request review for final plans.
Madhu and Dushantala, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, say nay, you can also abstain. Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I myself am an I as well, motion carries. Now we can move on to the next part of the agenda is public participation. Again, you guys have a two minute limit and comments must be limited to items on this agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak out in the public? Okay, we can move on to points of information. Does any board member have anything else to say at this point? Okay, so at 9:21, I will entertain a motion to enter in to executive session.
Madhu and Dushantala, make a motion to enter executive session.
Any second?
Second?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, say nay, you can abstain. Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, motion carries. Dr. Willett, we'll just wait for you to give us the okay.
At this point, and I apologize to everyone, we do have to clear the virtual room as we enter executive session for. So only those who are board members will be allowed to to stay in this this main area. And that may mean that you have to log in because I think once I put you out in that waiting room, you know, you might not, you'll be stuck in virtual purgatory of some kind. So so I got to start moving through this list and putting people in that in that room. So it'll take me a moment.
Point of information, Madam Chair, do we need to invite Dr. Willett to enter with us?
Oh, yes.
Otherwise, I'm putting myself in the room. It's really weird.
Should I have done, should I have done that before we entered?
No, it's okay, you can, you can invite me now.
Do executive session at 10:10.
Jacob Mari, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're back in regular session and we do have two members of the public who have joined us.
Okay.
Excellent.
So thank you guys for that. We have nothing on the future, no new business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Jacob Mari.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, you're you're good.
Oh, thank you, Madhu. Jacob Mari, I move to adjourn the regular January 27th Board of Education meeting at 10:11 PM.
Madhu and Dushantala, second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, say nay, ye may abstain or you may abstain. Dana?
Aye.
Reenie?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, motion carries. Good night, guys.
All right. Good night, everyone.